It's now 5:30. I'd like to call the meeting to order. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everyone tonight to commission meeting. At this time, I'll ask the commissioners if they've reviewed the agenda, have any additions or modifications, and...
Mr. Mayor, which version of the agenda? We've got about 600 of them this time.
I don't know. What time was the last one sent out?
Today. I'm sorry.
Just kidding.
Yeah.
I'm good.
Good.
I've had a chance, and I'm good, too.
Okay. If it's acceptable, then I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Move we adopt the agenda second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. First item on the agenda is park board appointment. We have one unexpired term applicants. Applications were due by July 13th. I believe we had one applicant?
Yes, Mayor.
And the applicant was Anita Sheppe?
That's correct.
I forgot to print that off. I'm sorry. So, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Anita to the unexpired term.
No second?
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Anita, welcome to the commission, the park board. That is Anita, isn't it?
I'm just your aunt.
Okay. Okay. My glasses haven't adjusted. So, yeah, do let her know. Thank you. Okay, great. Next item is consent agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Consider setting a date of September, let's see, no.
Twenty-seventh.
Two twenty-one South Fifteenth.
Yes. Public hearing for two twenty-one South Fifteenth. I'll open the public hearing.
So, we would like, it's staff's recommendation that we adjourn this for 30 days. I've had several days of vacation in July, haven't been able to meet up. I've been able to go over there and look at it, but I haven't been able to meet up with the owners to review things with them. In fairness to them, I'd like to recommend that we adjourn this for 30 days to give them some time to come up with a plan and some action on that.
Okay. The property owner's not present tonight?
Do not believe so. Do not see them here.
Okay. And normally, we allow any of the public, if they want to speak concerning the item, anyone from the public present wants to address. Okay, well, I'll close the public hearing. Commission, it's open for discussion.
Sounds good to me.
Sounds good to me, too. We discussed this lengthy, the meeting before, for the, when this house came up.
Okay. So, with that, I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
I move that the public hearing for two twenty-one South Fifteenth Street be adjourned until August 23rd, 2018, at 5:30 PM.
Second?
Motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
Thanks, Don.
Next item on the agenda, presentations. Montgomery County Action Council Quarterly Update and 2019 Budget Request.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you very much for having me here. This is our second quarter update for what we've been up to at MAC. We presented back earlier in the year, and so we've been extremely busy even since January. And I would say, this has probably been one of the busiest small business development times that MAC has seen in quite some time. We, with the merger of Coffeyville's eCommunity Program and Northern Montgomery County eCommunity Program, there was some urgency to get as many loans completed and lended out before the fiscal, the state's fiscal year rolled over, when they really changed the way the statewide eCommunity Programs worked. So, we were pretty active in marketing with Northern Montgomery County eCommunities Group, with Innovative Business Resource Center, and Jim Correll, and Tim Hines at the ICC, as well as the Coffeyville Chamber of Commerce, to get as many small businesses that were considering expansion, considering opening, to go after those funds. And a little bit of backstory on that, Coffeyville's eCommunity Program really had been underutilized for several years. They got a new chamber director last year, and they really focused on improving small business development, just as we've been doing the same thing for the past year. So, we were lucky to get two small business loans completed before the end of the fiscal year for Coffeyville, and loaned out their entire fund balance, so that way the state didn't get to take it back. And then, in Independence, we were able to help out Dairy Queen with their final loan to get their doors open, and then also Sawyer's Fine Wine and Spirits, which will be opening, hopefully, in the next few months down where Kessler's Liquor Store used to be, right there at the intersection of Main and Penn. And the owners of that small business is Michelle Smith, well, now Conway, because they got married halfway between our lending process, to Patrick Conway, the manager and owner, co-owner of Brothers Railroad Inn. So, we're excited to see another small business take on another entrepreneurial challenge and open another small business in our downtown, leaving one less vacant building, and a newly rehoused building, hopefully, with all the money that we loaned them. So, it's been a busy year for small business, but we're able to get a lot done for some of our small businesses. So, we've already seen four, we saw four this quarter, and I have one, four more already on my desk, that are ready for final review and approval by these boards as well. So, a lot of marketing effort went into our budget this year to market these small business loans, because we knew it was use it or lose it for these funds. But then, we also wanted to show the state of Kansas with the merger, and with the basic consolidation that the, that Network Kansas is doing with all the loan funds across the state, that Montgomery County is ready to really focus on small business development. So, we've been pushing that quite a bit. With the four loans already pending, I think we will see some, some great new opportunities opening up in our county, so. So, that was one of the things we've done this year, this, already this quarter. We also attended the annual retail recruitment conference in Las Vegas, which is challenging for me, because I'm allergic to cigarette smoke, and I hate gambling, so that was kind of a fun conference for me. But, the, the conference was extremely helpful. We had continued conversations with Jimmy John's, continued conversations with retailers like Maurice's. We had conversations with a few other restaurants, Quick Trip, Loves, that were there, and we showed them sites that were available in Independence and around Montgomery County that we thought they might be good fits for. We used a lot of data from Estree, which Montgomery County Action Council uses, and we get a free membership through our membership with KEDA, which is the Kansas Economic Development Alliance. So, we get, we get that data for free as part of our membership with that through MAC. So, we're able to use that data, really identify what the market leakage is for each of those companies, and we'll have, there's a, one of those restaurants I met with was going to be here in August, and I'll be showing them some sites here in Independence, so, fingers crossed. Lastly, we've had seven RFPs, request for proposals submitted to Kansas Department of Commerce already this, this year. We're not on pace to be last year. Last year, we, I think we were already at 14. Last year was a really busy year, especially for manufacturing, but two or three of those of the seven, we were really good fits for. And Kansas Department of Commerce told me specifically, at least for one of those, that we met every single one of those, of the businesses' criteria, including that they were open to looking at rural locations. So, that, we went through that one about six weeks ago, I think it was. So, we have a pretty good chance for that one. I haven't heard anything since then. Usually takes them about four to eight weeks to get back to us on, on those proposals that we submit. So, before I get into the Tyson Recruitment Update, which is the presentation that's up, I wanted to, to show our budget, which is the second page of the flyer that I had handed out. This year, we are requesting continuation of the funding that you funded last year, which was $25,000. That, that money goes towards, well, goes into our operating fund. It pays for salaries, it pays for marketing efforts, it pays for all the brochures, the trips to recruit these businesses, which have been considerable this year. But, we're on pace to do pretty well this year. We've cut back on the budget quite a bit to really allow for some more flexibility in some of this business recruitment, and to really beef up some of our small business development and loan programs that we're, that we're doing. In addition, we applied for several grants, one of which we were awarded with USDA for $30,000, and that grant will help pay for a countywide economic development strategic plan, that then we can give to each of the four cities. It'll be directed and have information for each of the four cities to use, as well as the county government as well, to help solidify the strategic plan for our county. It will cover a marketing plan, so we'll have marketing, who we should be marketing, how we should be marketing, how should we spend our marketing dollars. It'll also include a targeted industries plan, and that will say, well, for example, in Independence, I already know what your targeted industries are. We've already worked on that pretty intensely in the past, but aerospace, specifically small aerospace manufacturing, partners that would partner with Cessna and Kansas Aviation and Aviation Controls, that would complement their industries, or that might share some shared resources. So, for example, Renew's just came here from Georgia, and they opened their newest facility, created 30 new jobs here in Montgomery County back in March, and they are a company that now MACOR here in town can use. They're contracting with Acme Foundry, but they originally came here as a John Deere vendor. They are the John Deere Painting Company for John Deere Corporate, not just for this plant, but for all John Deere products. Renew's is the painter. Previously, they've been shipping all their products to Georgia, or to Texas, to be painted, and then brought back up again. So, this company will help not just John Deere, but MACOR, Acme Foundry, and then several others, which I can't talk about yet, because they're still in negotiations with their contracts. But, we're really excited to see a company like that come into Montgomery County, and that's one of our big wins already for 2018. So, with that, I will wrap up that piece of, of the presentation, and I wanted to talk about our tour that we just had with, with Tyson Foods in Springdale, Arkansas. The executive team of Tyson Foods requested that we come and, and take a look at what facility might look like if it were to come to Montgomery County. So, at the request, we put together a committee that had elected officials. Our very own Commissioner Gary Hogstod attended. City Manager Brooke Carroll, who's in the audience as well, who will help answer any questions, if you have any. We had, through pictures here, so you can see who was there. We had Charlotte Scott Schmidt, County Clerk, to represent the county, as well as Diana Carter, our county appraiser. We thought that was really important that she attended, because there's going to be a lot of new facilities opening up in Montgomery County, with the production facility, the feed mill, the hatchery, and 400 barns that'll be coming into this area. We thought it'd be good for her to go ahead and get her understanding of what these barns might look like, and so she can start working with the Kansas Department of Revenue on, on what this might look like, since we don't have anything like that right now in the state of Kansas. So, and then with Coffeyville, we had Commissioner Jim Taylor, Mike Shook, their interim city manager, Craig Correll, the superintendent of schools for Coffeyville, Candy Westbrook for the Coffeyville Chamber, and then from MAC, we had our Board President, Mike O'Malley, Ryan Thompson, who is our, he represented Coffeyville Industries, since it'd be a Coffeyville site, Lisa Keen, who's been doing our marketing efforts and trying to help host some of these community meetings we've been having, myself, and then we were graced by the State of Kansas, Josh Rowe, the Deputy Secretary of Agriculture, as well as the Marketing Director for Kansas Department of Agriculture, Carrie Weefall. That's a mouthful. So, to get started, the first piece of the tour was their research and development facility. One of the things that I wanted, that, that really struck me, is that we talk so much about entrepreneurship and these small businesses getting started, and that's exactly how Tyson Foods started. It started in that truck, in that picture. Don Tyson was delivering eggs and chicken to Kansas City, St. Louis, and Chicago, and quickly realized the demand exceeded his distributional logistics systems, and rapidly expanded his business, so that he could improve chicken distribution in the Midwest. And that rapidly grew to the United States, and then internationally. So, it really is a true American story of a one man, a pickup truck, and some chickens, and how quickly that can grow into one of the largest businesses in the United States. So, this is the picture of the kitchens. Each one of those kitchens that you can kind of see in the, in the bottom there are dedicated to certain customers. So, one kitchen might be a McDonald's kitchen, and it has all the equipment that a McDonald's kitchen would have in it, so they know exactly how those products that Tyson makes for McDonald's can be cooked, and how they would taste when they're cooked in those products, so that they can maximize all that. So, one thing I thought was really interesting is how many people it takes to make one single chicken nugget, and it takes hundreds of people. And you can see this office here, it had 250 employees, and it just in their research and development offices. 2,600 people were on campus, we were, where we were located, and so that doesn't even include all the production facilities, feed mills, hatcheries, that were spread out all over Springdale, Arkansas. Their campus is in the center of Springdale, Arkansas, as well as their production facility. One thing that really struck me is the production facility and the feed mill were in the middle of some of the most beautiful residential rolling hills estates with mega mansions on them, and right next to a chicken production facility. So, I thought that was really fascinating. So, you can tell how Springdale, the plant was originally built, and these buildings, these houses were there originally when it was built, and then it just grew from there. Property values obviously improved significantly. So, then the hatchery, this is what a hatchery would look like. It just looks like an office building. If you drove past it, you would just think that was a doctor's clinic, just a regular brown building with a brown storefront, but inside is a pretty technologically advanced facility. So, this is a batch of eggs that just came in from the farm. This section of eggs, each one of these racks had several thousand eggs on them, and this is a very empty room. Usually, the room is very, very full. So, this is all of us on our tour. Usually, that room there is completely full of eggs. So, in this up-close picture of the eggs, those white brackets there, I thought was an amazing technology that they had, and maybe it's because I, I never had chickens of my own growing up, or I never had anything like that, but this air supply that goes through those eggs, through that white bracket, rotates the eggs the way a mother hen would if the egg was in a nest. So, no humans ever touch the eggs. They're in those, those racks from when they leave the, the farm. Once they're in this hatchery, no one touches these eggs until they're hatched. So, I thought that was kind of neat. This is the incubator systems. It just looks like a wall of ovens, and then here are the fans and us standing in the incubator systems. This facility was clean. It was incredibly clean. You could have eaten your dinner on these floors. It was, it was pretty impressive. And then this is the baby chicks. They're still in the incubators, I'm taking a picture through a window. They just hatched. And so, they're, once they're hatched, they go into this next room, where all the chicks are checked, make sure they're nice and healthy, and then they are loaded onto the semi, the climate-controlled semi-trucks, that then take them to the barns, where they will live for the next seven to eight weeks. Then those trucks come back, and then all of those trays are completely sanitized and steam cleaned. And this is one thing that my husband actually pointed out. There's a lot, people talk about the consumption that this plant is going to have, 2 million gallons per day demand. Well, that's water coming in, used to clean, primarily used to clean their products and their machinery, and then that water is cleaned, and then put back into the river. So, it's not like they're taking out 2 million a gallons, and that water goes away. The water is used to clean things, and then sent back into the river after it's been processed through a water treatment facility, similar to what the city of Independence would have. So, these are the farms. This is what it'll look like if, if they were to build in Montgomery County. This is an eight-barn setup. These barns are about one-year-old, so it's look pretty close to what we would have. It's the same dimensions. In fact, Tyson sent me all the dimensions for these barns, so we can start figuring out what this would look like, maybe even in GIS in our county, with, with certain farmers who are interested.
I might jump in and say that, as we approached the barns, as we approached every facility, we kept stopping the vans, and we would get out to do the sniff test. We'd all stand beside the van and see when, when we could smell them, if we could smell them, and odors were remarkably nonexistent, really.
It just smelled like a pasture. It ever just stood out in a field. It's what it smelled like. There was no dust particulate. It was 102 degrees that day, so those fans that are going through the tunnel system that they have were blowing at full speed, and there was no dust, there were no feathers, like everyone was, have said. I was really impressed with how clean a farm could be. So, these, and those had been in operation for a year, so you could see the impact of what it was. So, this is our group here. These are the hazard suits they make us wear to protect the birds from us. You probably aren't aware of it, but when you walk around the ground, you might pick up some poop from a bird that is not related to a chicken, and that can actually transmit disease to those chickens and wipe out an entire flock. So, they make sure that you are completely covered from head to toe, to make sure that no bird gets something from you. We would, we would hate to have that farmer lose his flock. This is a picture of the barns themselves, cooling cells, similar to a swamp cooler you might have had in your grandma's house. And other, some other pictures that we all took as a group. The barns are really close together, they're about 25 feet apart, storm drainage through the center, to make sure there's adequate storm drainage, and then these are the feed towers that, that supply the corn and soybean meal that's fed to the chickens. So, we're standing right here, it's probably 150, 200 feet away from, from those barns, and again, I couldn't smell anything. Anything else, Brooke?
Smelled like grain.
Yeah. A lot of, you smelled corn.
Corn, grain.
Yeah.
There was nothing gross. I mean, gross stuff.
And another thing, I guess Charlotte pointed out at the county commission meeting, is the temperature inside those barns was a cool, comfortable 84 degrees versus outside the barns, we were dying. So, for the sake of time, I could probably skip over this. We put a video in here to show what the equipment is, but I can share that video on the MAC website, if you want to take a look at it. I'll just skip through it. But, it's a, it's the electronic, electronic systems that run through. We couldn't take pictures inside the plant, and the reason why is because your cellphone is very dirty, and they don't want those, the risk of that getting on raw chicken as we're inside the plant, so. And it's also, you know, confidential machinery. They probably don't want to sharing. So, the last bit was our, our meeting with our executive team, talking about this project and what we might be looking at moving forward, but then also just kind of a, let's get to know them, as well as, as them getting to know us. One thing that really struck me and several others that participated is the fact that most of the employees there were there for 20, 30, 35, 40 years, that had been with Tyson for their entire careers, and were very loyal to that company. They had gentlemen that were, I don't know if you can really see, on the bottom one on the left with the 20 under his name, so he, he was the line production manager. So, he actually works out in the plant with the staff to make sure that the lines are all operating properly, but he had been there for 20 years. So, I thought that was really impressed, and then I, impressed face, that's Josh Rowe, Deputy Secretary of Agriculture. This was the first time he had also seen a production facility, a live, a live keel plant, so he, he was really impressed with, with how it was. So, with that, I'll leave it open for questions. Is there a new Tyson logo, if you see it out and about?
This is the second time I got to sit through your presentation. I was there with the county, and I, I don't know whether you mentioned it at the previous meeting I attended, but how many jobs did we end up gaining in, through the county for the year? I, I don't know whether you made a statement previous, well, in the amount of 268 jobs were added, or 286?
280 new jobs were created in 2017. Most of those were from small businesses, but some of those were from companies like John Deere, Cessna. VT Hackney added a few jobs, but a lot of those were small businesses. We had about 10 small business loans that we did last year to help some small businesses add three to, to seven employees. A couple of those had 30 employees with small business loans that we loaned out.
And these would be throughout Montgomery County?
Throughout Montgomery County, yeah.
And in, in the part about the, the water, if the plant would build a facility here in Montgomery County, on the water part, would that be treated twice? Would they have a, a facility that would treat the water, and then they would send it, in this case, to the city of Coffeyville, and the city would treat the water again before it would be turned back into the river? Is that right?
Correct. Yeah. So, they'll have a pretreatment facility on-site, that's part of their design plan, that makes sure that all the BOD levels and everything is basically returned to the condition at or better than the condition it came in from the river on, and from the city of Coffeyville. Then it's sent to the city of Coffeyville, and they go through a more thorough treatment system of it, and then it's discharged back into the river.
Okay.
Just like water does it, the normal water treatment facility.
And of the 280 jobs that were created, what percentage would have been, that would have been actually new to the county? Do you have that?
All 280, those were new jobs.
Or, I guess I should phrase that to, to a new employer?
To a new employer. There were probably seven of those employers, new companies, that opened up. Renew's was one of those, Smith Auto and Tire in Kaney, I'll have to list all of them off the top of my head, but scattered around the county. A few of them in Coffeyville, two or three in Independence.
How close is a county working with MAC? The appraiser went to view the buildings, but then the county commissioners are considering a revitalization program that's going to give a 10-year abatement on property tax. It seems counterproductive. You know, we're going to increase a lot of expenses on roads and maintenance in the county, but then the revenue that you're talking about being generated in tax dollars is going to go away for 10 years. So, they seem to be fighting against each other. That's going to create a negative impact on, on the county. Have they consulted you about the revitalization plan that they're looking at?
I have not been a part of that plan at all. I saw a draft of, of what it was a couple of months back. I think he said, they sent it out to pretty much everyone. That's all I've been consulted on that program. You know, I've attended the commission meetings the same as anyone else, and provided feedback when asked. The interesting part of this is, I'm not 100% sure if these barns that would be built around Montgomery County would be allowed to be exempted under that program, because under state statute, it specifically says agriculture buildings cannot be exempted from property tax, so we're still trying to learn what that would be. At this point, I don't think the barns could be, but I think we're kind of waiting on the Attorney General to report back on what that is. At this point, I, I don't believe that they would be. It's definitely possible that they could be. If that's the case, I would not recommend a full 10-year abatement for any of those agriculture buildings. At most, I would say a five, and then taper that down, because it would be at least five years, with the condition that the roads are in, that the bar, that the road would need to be fixed up and, after the traffic on that road. So, by then, we would hopefully be able to have some sort of tax increment financing that would be based on the increased appraised valuation of those barns, and set aside some of that money to go back to specific county road improvements. And I met with Robert Beaver this morning to talk to him about, how can we set up a... And I met with Robert Beaver this morning to talk to him about how can we set up a program that would do something like that? With whatever this ends up being, I, I, at this point, that's a program, county revitalization hasn't been passed yet. And I'm moving on the premise that they will go on the tax rolls. So how do we make sure that we set aside that increased appraised valuation that we're going to see? And, and make sure that those funds go directly back to those county roads to be repaired. In addition, I'm working with a couple other state and federal agencies to help support that, that process.
Well, when we had visited, I knew you were doing a lot of research for roads, real water, water consumption and just didn't know how that meshed with what you've been researching, so.
It's a new and innovative thing. I'm not 100% sure how that's going to work. I think we have a lot to learn. I think it's a great idea at the same time, because I think anyone who wants to invest in our county and build something new, I'm all for it. Let's, let's grow our county. But at the same time, there's a lot of, of different things that we need to learn about, about that program. But again, that's, I'll leave that one to the county commissioners, that's their.
Well, when you look at the magnitude of buildings you're talking and the, the daily traffic and the size of the vehicles and the weight, increased use on the roads, they are going to deteriorate a lot quicker, so.
Right. So regarding the transportation routes, so the trucks, it's about once a week for the first four or five weeks is a truck will be going down those roads. And it's only in the last two or three weeks that they start coming on, every two to three days. And then in the last week, they come every single day. So it, it is tapered. You're really looking at five, five flocks a year, so five times a year for one week, you'll have a lot of truck, truck traffic. But the rest of the time, it's probably no more than your, your average feed trucks or corn trucks or anything like that going down the roads that we normally see. Obviously more, because there's more barns. But I don't think the impact's going to be quite as extensive as I even thought. Now, they've kind of mapped out that timeline of what that looks like.
Are you still having companies interested in the industrial park here?
Yes, absolutely. And actually, that was one piece of my presentation I completely forgot to mention. I was invited by Governor Collier to attend the unveiling of their new Kansas Department of Commerce program, Land in Kansas. And invited to participate in conversations with a task force that's been established to improve communication between local, state level, Kansas Department of Commerce, Kansas, Kansas Department of Agriculture staff. To flip business recruitment on its head. 180, so it's coming from local to state to business versus business to state to local. And the reason why I bring it up with that question is part of that is going to be a pilot program, which we will definitely be a part of. They're, they're rolling that out and applications I think are going to be due either November 1st or December 31st. They're still batting that deadline around. But it would be what we're already doing with that county economic development plan, but across the state of Kansas. So we're already kind of ahead of the curve because we already got that contract ready to go and we're already starting here in a couple of weeks on that. But we'll be able to have a targeted plan now for our industrial park and a marketing system for our industrial park with the targeted industries that the state of Kansas then is going to start pushing very heavily as this pilot program. So we're, we're kind of ahead of the curve already in Montgomery County on this. I'm really excited to see and, and they've assured me we'll be part of that, that pilot. As long as they're turning the application, I guess.
Is our industrial park in good condition, that it's competitive with others that businesses might be looking at? Is there anything that you've seen that maybe we need to tweak a little bit to make it more attractive to businesses?
Yes, and I, I've talked with Craig about this and you as well. We definitely need to, to work on, on clearing that site. There's a lot of evergreen trees that are, have started to grow up on that site. We need to clear it to make sure that it's nice and flat, so it's good for site selectors when they come and tour the site. There's a lot of time these site selectors come to our site because we actively market that site constantly. They don't ever stop and talk to me. They just go and they drive the site and take some pictures and then call me a couple of weeks later and say, hey, I was in town, I really like this site. I'm going to have the company, the rest of the company go ahead and come and tour the site with me here in a week. So we need to have it ready in case they come. The other thing about especially that West Laurel site, I get that it's, it's very prime location right now with Peter Pan being improved. But it's a very small site as it is. Even barely nipping all the way into the corners where you probably can't develop, you're at 68 acres. The average RFP for a new ground construction is at least 70 acres, so we're right there. So I, I would be, you know, I'd be cautious in, in making sure that we're preserving that industrial park as much as we possibly can. We have other locations also, the one out, the industrial park, at the airport industrial park. It's actually in really good condition, but I started seeing some cedar trees coming out, out there too. But, you know, these are our showpieces for our site selectors, so we just have to keep that in mind. The site at the airport is much larger. It's 200 or 300 acres. So we do have a larger site that we can market. And so that's what we've been using for the larger industrial sites. But if we're talking about recruiting a business like Renews with 30 to 50 employees that would need a 50,000 square foot building, they're going to want five to six acres minimum just to put their building on. And they almost always want a buffer zone that surrounds them of several acres because of usually security. So 50, 60 acres is minimum of most site developments that I've seen.
That's good to know.
Any chance we could help market the ARCO building if it's about to change hands?
Yes, absolutely. I've beefed up the information on that already on our location one. And I went ahead and informed Kansas Department of Commerce of its availability now so that they can put it at the top of their radar as they're looking for potential customers. Right now, it's being marketed as potentially a data center and office facility. So it's a hard building to market because it has had issues. It's really easy to Google the building and see all the issues that have happened with it. So I think this is one of the things where we're going to have to sit down and, and really put our heads together on how to make sure that we can get information out this building, work with the current owner to figure out a way to, to get that building sold or completely occupied. That's a hard one. It's a really hard building to, to push because of its issues that have been very public.
Yes. One other question that comes in, I doubt you'll know the answer to this, which is fine to say, I haven't a clue, but just interesting. I had two different people come to my office today. One said, no one will ever, ever move to Independence again because of Last Chance U. And then somebody else came like an hour later and said, how are we going to handle the boom that's going to happen from Last Chance U? Do you have any clue? Any clue whether, like in Mississippi, where that affected anything at all or?
Yeah, I, I think they actually had a very positive response. I was talking with.
In Scuba?
Huh?
In Scuba, Mississippi or here, you mean?
In Mississippi. In Mississippi, they have a lot of people actually that travel to the community just to take pictures with some of the, the main features they had on that show. International visitors even, so. We, we really talked about this at the last chamber meeting. And, you know, this is an opportunity, we have to, any publicity is good publicity, just like the Amazon building. It was devastating. And I went to like four conferences where they used us as the example of how not to do this. But at the same time, we got that Amazon building in front of countless site selectors at the same time. Hey, this is an available building. We're talking about it, but it means it's available. So it's the same thing. That would be my only advice is that right now, we're, we're really.
On the radar.
We are, we're on the radar. People can quickly Google us and we come to the top of the search engine bar instead of, you know, a few pages down because how many Independences are in the United States, right? So I think this is an opportunity and I would say if you're a business owner, to capitalize on it. You know, sponsor things for the ICC football team. Get your name out there in some way, whether it's, you know, working with the school district or the college to get, hey, this football game is sponsored by First Oak Bank or whoever that might be. To make sure that people can look up your business or, hey, Libby's Boutique or Apricot Lane is here in Independence, Kansas. Come visit and while you're here, here's this. Get information on those websites, links to other small businesses. That'd be the way I would say, take advantage of, of this.
Thank you.
I'm no marketing expert, but that would be my gut.
Thanks. I, I have one or two more questions. Five flocks a year, how many, how many chickens are you talking about?
So there's about 300,000 chickens in a flock. So in an eight barn grouping, there's about 300,000, 300, well, the maximum for the state of Kansas is 333,333 chickens. It's, it ends up being an even number, so it ends up being about 300,000 chickens per flock. So you would have five and a half on average flocks a year of 300,000 chickens. That's a lot of chickens. Because the processing facility alone processes 1.3 million chickens a week. So they have to have 400 barns that supply the 300,000 chickens on a weekly basis. And so they cycle all over the county. So you'll have baby chicks in one, on one farm and full ground chicks on another farm. And all the chicks in all eight barns are the same age. They're all brought in on the same pickup trucks. They're all brought out on the same trucks at the same time. That was something I learned too.
And my, my last question was, real water districts, I know some of them are struggling to keep up with the demand of the people that they're serving now. So that looks like that's going to, that could be a potential issue that we're going to have to face.
Yes, absolutely.
Wherever these barns locate to, so.
And I think that will end up being a determining factor of where those barns locate to. I think we're already, we are working very actively with the Kansas Water Office and identifying those real water districts that we know have some challenges. We have, they've identified real water districts have challenges, but that can be overcome with a little effort and funding, of course. And then some real water districts that are already well-engaged and well able to, to take on that additional load. The wholesale water districts have been very active in our conversations and they know which real water districts can handle and which ones can't. And that really is going to be a pretty high factor in where those farmers get to go. That'll be, it's going to be a lot easier to go to the farms that are on real water districts that are in good shape with that first round of barns that are being built. Because they aren't going to build all 400 in one year, right? So the first 100 barns perhaps in, in our region will be built in those real water districts that, that have capacity and have the ability to grow. But that is something that we've been working with USDA and the Economic Development Association on the federal level to see about creating a funding program that would go at it from two different directions. One, from the farmer as a small business and a small business entity, how can they fund USDA small business development loans or grants towards those farmers? And also funding to those real water districts to expand those lines and to get some lift stations that would improve that water supply and the pressure needed. Because sometimes that's all it is, is they just need a couple of lift stations to make sure that water is, the water pressure is maintained throughout that line. They might have excellent lines, so they just need some lift stations. So those are some of the things that we're, we've been working on.
Okay, thank you, Trish.
Yep. Any other questions?
Well, thank you. Appreciate you coming tonight and updating what MAC is doing in the county. Thank you again.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming too, Brooke.
Yep, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Our next presentation, the 1916 City Hall Assessment. Presentation, Vance?
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to come and report on the work that we've done. I'm Vance Kellam, principal with Trainer HL. Along with me is Ian Pitts. He's been the project manager on this project. He's been one out in the field that's spent most of the time in the building. But we've completed our first phase of the project and that's the assessment and looking at the condition of the building, looking at options for repair. And so we thought we'd be, come here and do a quick presentation for you and then answer any questions that you may have. During June 20th through 22nd, we spent three days onsite. We had about, we had, I think we had five people total there looking at both the interior and the exterior. We have two different scopes of work associated with this project. With the interior scope, we're looking at the selective demolition of materials that really could and should be removed as part of cleaning out this building, drying out this building. And allowing then the, the evaluation of what the future rehabilitation might hold for the building. The other is the exterior preservation or repair scope of the work, trying to make sure that the exterior of this building is watertight. And so that was everything from looking at the roof all the way down to the, to the foundation and waterproofing system. When we started the interior assessment, first thing we needed to do is identify what were the non-historic elements. Because we're dealing with a building that's on the register and a building that is eligible for the state preservation tax credits. We want to make sure that we can clean out the building, do selective demolition without jeopardizing the ability to go after those credits. So we looked at the walls, that have new walls that have been put in, furring on the walls, different doors, suspended ceiling systems and the different flooring and finish materials. So when you walk through the building, obviously it changed over time. So we have a lot of drywall or jipboard walls that can be removed. We have suspended ceiling systems that are no longer needed. And so what we started out with historically was a building that was pretty open on most of the floors that over time was subdivided in order to provide private offices. So we went through and we documented the changes over time, the furring, looking at the, where we can remove past work. Looked above the suspended ceiling system so that we knew what changes had been done. So when you go up there, you're going to see everything from ductwork to conduit to piping. And all of that can be cleaned out as part of a selected, selective demolition project. We also have different finishes in there. So we have a lot of walls, exterior walls that have been furred over. And as most of you know, when we look, we look at environmental issues, we have condition reports that talk about issues with mold. And wall, exterior walls that have been furred over are actually holding in moisture and they're also covering up the extent of it. So as part of this selective demolition, we'd be removing that. We do have a lot of modern floor finishes in there, carpeting. But under those modern floor finishes, we also have some of the older asbestos-containing floor tile. And there's a report that's part of the appendix of this that defines where they were able to identify that asbestos-containing material. We also wanted to make sure we identified the historic materials so that we didn't destroy them. Doesn't mean that some of these historic materials aren't going to be removed as part of the project. Because as the building was renovated in the past, some historic doors were actually relocated in new partitions. And so what we'll do is we'll be able to identify those to be salvaged as part of the selective demolition process. A lot of historic material in certain areas. So you have, in the public areas, you have a lot of doors, transoms. You have terrazzo floor, you have components like radiators, you have wood trim. We do have a lot of deterioration associated with some of the historic material. As you've walked around the building, especially hidden behind the radiators, you're going to see a lot of historic plaster that is dead or, or needs to be cleaned off and repaired. Doors, transoms are in great shape. They can be looked at and salvaged and reused depending on what the final scope might be for the interior use of the building. You have plaster ceilings that are in good shape, terrazzo floors that last for a very long time. So it's a well-built, quality building, concrete frame. And so it's a good, I describe it as having really good bones in order to, to build upon. We did look at the exterior waterproofing because as I mentioned before, there was concern with mold. And when you walk in the building, it's, it's very evident. And so we wanted to look at the previous project that installed the waterproofing to see whether we could tell whether it was still functioning or not. So we selected an area that we could excavate down. And what we found as we did our work is everything seems to be in good shape. The place we picked is an area of the building, so this is along the north wall at the northwest corner or edge of the building. And you can see the mold growing down there, mold low. You can also see deteriorated plaster up high. And this, this area allowed us to have fairly easy access to it. We could get the city's assistants with a backhoe in there and do the excavation. As we, before we excavated, we actually probed and we could tell that the granular fill, backfill up against the waterproofing was still loose and pliable. And sure enough, as we excavated down, it was clean. And so the, the granular fill is doing its job and there's a drainage system below. The waterproofing itself is in very good shape. It was protected by an insulation board. It was adhered well to the stone. And that was one of the things that we weren't sure it would be because the foundation, the, the below-grade foundation walls are actually built out of a sandstone. So many times, sand. So many times, sandstone, you can imagine, doesn't allow materials like this to adhere well, but it seemed well-connected, and you can see from the image, when we peeled back that protection board, it looked like it was in good shape. We still, obviously, had an issue in this corner, and so we went back to the historic drawings, and the drawing on the left is a historic drawing, and if you can see dotted in between the windows is a chimney, and there was historically a fireplace down in the basement. So when we went up on the roof and did our investigation up on the roof, you can see on the right-hand slide, that chimney is completely open. And that means rain and everything else is allowed to go down there. That could be contributing to why we're seeing an, an issue in this particular corner. A lot of deterioration and a lot of plaster, and so I'll, I'll talk about some of the things that we're, we're recommending for this, but that waterproofing, obviously, is doing a good job from the outside, from the one location that we excavated. We chose not to excavate any other locations, because as we dig, we, we are disturbing the granular fill, and we don't wanna, we don't wanna jeopardize the ability for it to, to drain. There's foundation draining syst, system that does have to go to a sewer gejector or sump pump in order to be drained to daylight, so that is one of the things we need to make sure is operating and is operating correctly. We need to get the, the plaster off the walls on the inside to allow the mason, masonry to breathe, because it could be wicking up moisture from down below, or like we're seeing in this particular area, it could be the water that's coming in, into the wall up above as well, and we need this to dry out. So our recommendation for a lot of the work in the basement is to get it cleaned out, remove the, the carpeting and the suspended ceilings, get plaster off the wall, and then we have moisture meters that, that during the time that work is going on, we can monitor and see if the improvements of making the sump pumps work, taking the roof drain and downspouts to daylight, rather than taking them underground piping that they have, and monitor it, and let's see if that's, if that's all of the problem, or at least solves part of the problem. The exterior assessment also involved, of course, the masonry, and the building itself is built out of stone, which is Carthage marble, brick, as well as terracotta, ornamental terracotta detailing, very nicely done, but all of these materials have their own issues that need to be dealt with. When you look at the building, you can see the stone base on the bottom, that's Carthage marble. Carthage marble is no longer quarried, it's a very dense, it's actually a limestone, is what it is. It's a dolomatic limestone, it's a very hard limestone, and that's why it's been given its name as marble. The brick, brick itself is a really nice, hard-fired brick with a rough texture on it, and then terracotta, of course, is a glazed material that is used for ornamentation. It was one of those materials, when it was first developed, it was a substitute for natural stone, because it was a less expensive material, but it does have its own issues that we need to look at. So what Ian has done is he's sort of color-coded for people who don't know some of the architectural terms, the Carthage marble is the base down in the, the pink, it's also used for window sills, the brick is the dark brown area, and then terracotta ornamentation you can see on the string course and the projecting course up above. So with the stone base, as we go around, the stone itself is in very good condition, for the most part. There are issues like this one particular slide that we're showing, and we're showing it because it's not the stone that is the issue here, it's actually that the steel lintel that's supporting the stone up above is rusting and corroding, and, and as steel expands and rusts, it can grow seven to eleven times its original thickness. So as rust expands, it puts a great deal of pressure on the materials above and below the stone. The terracotta itself, overall, is in good condition, but when you start looking at it, the glaze itself is, has some deterioration. And that glaze is what protects the inner bisque of terracotta. Terracotta is, is similar to a brick in that a brick is fired in a kiln to, to take clay and dry it out, same thing, but terracotta usually has a glaze material, like a ceramic material. When that wears off, then it exposes the more porous material underneath, the bisque material, and so we can repair this, take care of this from a maintenance perspective, so that it's not an issue, and, and it's not as if the terracotta has to be replaced. There's an example of some of the glaze that has worn off. A lot on the top side of the projecting cornices, that's where most of the deterioration for the terracotta can be seen. Exterior windows, we also went around and reviewed all the windows, of course, most of the windows are replacement windows, they're vinyl windows, they're not historic, they're not in very good shape. The, the installation is, has allowed over time gaps to open up, and so we're, we're seeing a lot of water intrusion because of the previous replacement windows that are, are in the building. That water that's getting in is corroding the, the steel lentils, and so you can see there where a piece of steel should be very thin there, and then all of a sudden, you can see that it's corroded and bowed out. And I'm gonna go to one more photograph that shows a little bit closer. So there's the steel, it, this is actually expanded slightly, and you can see that this, I, and we scraped this out, that, there is expanded steel in that thickness, so it put that kind of pressure on the bottom of that steel lintel. The roof, the roof certainly has been modified and changed over time, so there's multiple layers of existing roofing, you can see ponding that's occurred. There is, the historic parapet cap is poured and placed concrete, is actually a reinforced parapet cap on top that has some deterioration to it. There are historic skylights, one that has been replaced, and the other is still an original one, that its construction certainly is allowing moisture to enter the building as well. The entire roof all drains to the south side of the building through two downspouts, and so a lot of water is running to the south side of the building. Those downspouts then go underground to underground piping that is supposed to take it to daylight. That's why we're recommending as part of this temporary scope or this first scope of the project, to let it drain to daylight, rather than going through the old system. And that way, we can have plumbers and others help snake or scope those lines to see if they've been collapsed, because that could be allowing a lot of water to set around the foundation drainage system. That's supposed to be a drainage system, but if it can't go anywhere, what it's going to do is it's gonna hold water up against the building.
It's never had more than two downspouts?
It was designed with two downspouts. It was pretty amazing. Normally, we would slope to multiple sides of the building, and I'm, I probably believe from an aesthetic standpoint, they felt like putting those downspouts on the backside. So the concrete deck is actually poured on a slope back to the, to the south side. The higher roof drains off onto the lower roof, and so on the east side of the building, there's a lot of water that goes from above the jail, the old jail, down onto the lower roof on the east, clear into the back, and that is the downspout where we're not sure where it actually goes. And so even down in the mechanical room, we're seeing water issues coming through a wall that beside it has the, the, the fire engine bay, that there is no basement under it, plus the addition further east. So we're really thinking, as we look at this, the water issues we're seeing down in the basement is not caused by one single element, but by a number of potential situations that is allowing water to set around the building. Certainly see, there's penetrations because of plumbing and piping, we have the tower up on top of the roof, the communications tower that isn't used, so as part of the recommended scope, we're, we're recommending that all, all be cleaned off. What we prepared in the booklet, and we'll leave a printed booklet for you, I'll leave it with Kelly. We've given her electronic copies, given Craig electronic copies, but you're gonna see in there where we have identified where nonhistoric wa, walls are or furring that we're recommending go in ahead and be removed. We wanna get rid of the carpet, the suspended ceiling systems, the drywall walls, that right now, they're just absorbing the moisture that's, that's in the building, and get that cleaned out. And that's on all floors, so you'll see a recommended first-floor selective demolition plan, you'll see a second-floor selective demolition plan in the, in the material basement as well, and that will help open it up and allow us to, to dry out the building. In the book, you're also gonna see exterior elevations that talk about all the proposed or recommended repairs, the types of repairs that we're suggesting, because we have the different materials, the repairs for each of the materials, of course, is, is different depending on what that, what that material is. So all the elevations are in there, in this draft form as, as recommended. We, we did look at how to handle the different repairs, the terracotta, we believe can be repaired without much replacement. The brick itself is in very good condition, but in an historic building, they were not designed with expansion joints, the expansion occurs within the mortar joint, so as buildings move, an old building moves like this, which means the expansion joint really occurs throughout the wall in the mortar joint. The mortar joint is usually designed to be softer than the surrounding masonry, so that over time, if there's deterioration, it occurs in the joint. And those mortar joints can last forty years or more if dealt with appropriately through its initial construction, and then, of course, as it's repointed in, as a, as a later project. But it's, it's time-consuming. And we looked through the mortar joints, and, and there's a high percentage of head joints, the, the vertical joints that are open, and then quite a few bed joints that are as well. In trying to establish a budget, we said, okay, well, how do we start with making decisions? And because we need to figure out what is an acceptable budget at this stage, we, we believe that we can recommend that partial repointing be, maybe be a base bid component to the contractors, but go ahead and take an ad alternate to repoint the entire wall, because when you do that, then you're gonna have a consistent life cycle for that wall, rather than having partially repointed that's gonna last a long time and still have the older or the historic mortar deteriorate more quickly. But let's see where that might put us. And so Ian and I worked together to create a detailed cost estimate, and it's included in the, in the book. This is preliminary from the standpoint, we haven't made all of the decisions on what materials to use or what the proper solution is. We use published materials as a starting point, because it's up to date, it starts to show both labor and material costs, but because we do a lot of historic preservation and restoration work, we have our own database, so we tweak those numbers depending on the work. And you can see, when we add in the, what we would call a base bid type component with partial repointing of the building, we're probably at a one point two million dollar project. Just by adding in and saying, let's repoint the entire building so it's all consistent, yes, we're adding a little bit more, you're, you're closer to probably a one point three million. Now this estimate, again, like I said, is our first blush, taking into the scope, the level of deterioration and the scope of work. We do have contingencies in there. So we have two different contingencies, and they are different. We have a construction contingency that most people understand, and that is because as a contractor gets in and as they tear out the vinyl windows, for example, we can't see the condition of the wood that they left under that, so there might be some additional work. So we have a construction contingency included, and we also then have what we call a design contingency, because we're not through making design decisions with you as the building owner to set the, the scope that's gonna be the final, that shows up in the, in the final bid documents. The other, there are two other things that don't show up as part of the cost estimate. One is the abatement work. I mentioned that you do have a report that deals with mold, it deals with asbestos, it deals with lead paint. We know that's there. We don't work or deal with environmental issues. The consultant that was brought on in the earlier study, PSI, should be part of this team to help us figure out what those costs would be. We do know that as we re-roof this building, some of the asbestos is up in the, the roofing material, if you've seen the silver roofing material up there, it's asbestos-containing. The other thing that this estimate does not talk about, and that's the historic preservation tax credits that are available. So this does not reflect the potential return that you can receive from the tax credits. And as we've talked in the past, that's a twenty-five percent tax credit on the allowable expenses of the project. So if you look at a one point two million dollar project, and you look at a twenty-five percent tax credit, but let's not be overly optimistic and say a hundred percent of those expenses might be allowed, so let's say eighty percent of those would be allowed, and then because you're not going, as you sell or transfer those tax credits, you're not gonna get a dollar for dollar, but you might get ninety, ninety cents on the dollar. So there's a potential, though, of two hundred thousand dollars or more of potential tax credits associated with the work that we've identified in, in this report. So all of a sudden, then, a one point two million dollar project potentially could be one million or, or even less. I guess to close my presentation to you, we want you to make sure that you have an opportunity to read the report and look at what we're recommending, because it is important before we take the next step that we're all in agreement with what the scope should be, as well as what the budget we need to be designing to as part of the construction document phase. Because of the lintel issues that I noted for you, we do need to bring in a structural engineer, and, and when we provided our proposal to you, so there's no reason to, to do that yet until we knew whether one was ne, needed or not, and we do need some assistance designing a new lintel. And then, of course, because of some of the environmental issues, we certainly do need to look at bringing the assistance of an environmental firm back to the team. And then, of course, we're, we need you to look at the scope of work, make those decisions before we can actually move forward with, with the construction documents. So with that, I'll open it up for questions.
Okay. Commissioners?
It wasn't real clear to me what that figure included. I know you've got it broken out, but basically, that's to do the demolition, and then a new roof and new windows?
Yes. So our overall scope is removing the existing roofing material, insulating the top side of the deck, re-roofing with new, we're recommending modified bitumen roof, new flashing around the top coping and the perimeter on all the roofs. On the exterior masonry, the brick is in good shape, there's a little bit of brick masonry repair, we are recommending mortar joints be repointed, and wherever brick repair is necessary to do that. The Carthage marble is a stone that does have some natural stylates, is what we call them seams, those aren't necessarily cracks, and so you always have to be a little bit careful with Carthage marble in that many people who aren't familiar with it will think, well, that stone is so damaged, I have to get rid of it, and that's not true. And so our estimate includes some repair work, some patching work, and some replacement work, but not a lot of replacement of, of the stone. So on the exterior, we did not include any new waterproofing. That was a discussion when we were here the first time, is do we really need to do that? And right now, we don't believe we do. We'd like to, as part of this work, divert the downspouts as part of the interior selective demolition work, we'd like to get the plaster off the wall, and that way we can monitor it to see if, and, we also wanna cap the open chimney as well.
Right.
And the windows? And the windows would be brand-new windows.
Historically accurate?
So you have an advantage in that through time, the historic windows have been replaced. And so if I were working on an historic building that has historic windows, the standards that you would need to meet for approval and/or tax credits, it would be telling you you should be replace, repairing them first.
Right.
And replacing them with something that matches exactly. Well, we don't have anything there, so it does open the doors, so we could look at, you could look at a wood window going back in, what was there historically? You could look at a wood-clad window, or you could look at an all aluminum window as well. Because they would be new windows, we have the opportunity to do insulated glazing, thermally broken, modern, energy-efficient windows. And that's what we've estimated is an aluminum, all aluminum... And that's what we've estimated is an aluminum, all aluminum insulated glazing, uh, unit with the idea that we would be looking at historic photographs and drawings and coming close to matching the profiles so that it has an appropriate appearance.
Okay, thank you. On the, uh, the cap on the roof, that it's still open?
So, the chimney cap is open.
Still open.
Still open, yes.
So, we're still subject to?
We are.
Rain getting in?
We are. And there, so if the city would like, there, there are some quick, uh, temporary repairs that could be made to get that capped. The, the, so that is important because we really feel like in that particular location, that's contributing to the issue. We may even have a water line that comes in close to that same area as well. Um, and so, our engineer will be talking to the, um, city staff about, you know, the size of it, um, where it comes in. Is it still, is it turned off at the street or is it, does it, is it still holding water and is water turned inside? So, that would be, there's some, I would say, some intermediate steps that we could take well before we finish the documents.
With, um, restoring a, a complete new roof on the building?
Mm-hmm.
What's the estimated longevity of, of a new roof?
So, we're-
That particular roof on the building?
Yeah, so we're, we're trying to make sure that, and warranties on roofs, you can buy extended warranties. Flat roofs, um, you know, you, you, you buy a residential roof and you look at the shingles and they give you a thirty, thirty-five year warranty. Commercial roofs, to get that level of warranty, you pay extra four. But the type of roofing system that we're talking about gives the ten year warranty, plus you can get an extended warranty on it as well.
Any special credentials required for the demolition team on historic demolition?
So, um, what we have found is most demolition contractors don't necessarily have skilled staff doing the work. What we write into the specifications, though, is that that job site superintendent has to have experience in doing what we're doing. What we don't want to do is for the selective demolition contractor to cause more damage to the finishes and features of the building and/or jeopardize our ability to capture tax credits. So, we try to, within our specifications, provide as much control as possible.
On the, uh, initial report, um, when Andy Pitts made his presentation, at that time, he thought that the, they knew that there was asbestos in the building and that would be, uh, need to be handled by a certified company.
Yeah.
As far as removal of that. But he indicated he, he thought as far as the, the mold that was in the building, that that would just be part of general construction. So-
Yes.
Had that, that theory changed?
No, no, that's, that theory hasn't changed. So, there, we really do believe that you will need, um, an environmental abatement company to deal with asbestos, which appears to be limited on piping insulation, I think more in the mechanical room itself. Because it, as we look, um, around it and read the report, it looks as if most has been removed in the past. So, we have some pipe insulation, we have then floor, uh, material. We have, uh, I'm going to call it a popcorn ceiling in the nineteen fifty-sixties edition on the east that is asbestos. That needs special abatement work. We have lead paint, which all buildings do. But as part of a selective demolition process, it's not as if you're abating the material. Because it looks at the debris in parts per million of lead paint compared to the rest of the debris that's coming off. So, you're, you wouldn't be using an abatement company for lead paint. And then the mold issue, um, is in the last report, it was less severe than some of the earlier indications were showing. And I think the mold itself, you get the chairs, carpeting, all of that taken out of there. What you're going to find is the building can dry out more appropriately. And, and then we'll have to monitor to see if it's drying out so that the mold doesn't rebloom or come back.
Okay, my other question is, uh, on the glazing of the terracotta.
Yeah.
What's the like, what's the lifespan? And it's all due to the elements that are going to affect that. But typically, when you're glazing terracotta, what, what can you expect longevity out of that?
For the repair?
For the repair?
Yeah, yeah, so that is something that, um, uh, there are specialty products on the market that, um, they help replace where the glaze is gone. But it is not a ceramic glaze like what's on there historically. I would describe it as a coating or a specialty paint. And as we deal with paints or coatings, um, there needs to be a review of that top side of that at least every five years to see how it's holding. Now, I've used, uh, products on other terracotta projects that are probably now twenty-five years old that seem to be holding up well. Most of our repair was on a vertical surface, not on a horizontal. A skyward facing horizontal area is going to, um, go through a lot more wear and tear than a vertical surface. So, I, I would caution or just remind everybody, it's not a permanent, it's, it's not a fifty year, um, material.
So, in, in that process, would that be something that we would, we would come back to you to do the review of the terracotta in five years?
Or, or staff.
Or staff?
It could, it could always start with staff.
Okay.
Obviously, you can do a lot of that review from the roof and there is roof access. So, I think it'll be fairly easy for that initial review. If we're starting to see deterioration, then you need to get up and you actually need to touch it and see what's going on. And that's when you might need a consultant to, to come back and, and help evaluate that.
Okay.
And that could be us or anybody, yeah.
And being that's paint, would that be something that, that a local contractor would be able to do? Or would this would be something that we would have to go out somewhere that specializes with this particular glazing and this particular?
It is a specialty product, but local paint companies can go through training with that, uh, manufacturer supplier. So, they can become certified to be able to, to work and use that material. And that's what's happened on other projects. Materials provided by the manufacturer, the local painting company sends its two or three people to get trained and then they come back and they perform the work.
Okay. My other question is, uh, it sounds like there appears to be multiple places that we might have water infiltration.
Yes.
And, um, there was some question about whether a particular sump pump was operational or not. And I've heard conflicting stories, one that it was when the building was vacated and I've heard another where it was not operating as it should prior to that, so-
And, and we didn't go down into and check the sump pump. There were multiple days we were expecting rain and we got sprinkles. And so, we couldn't even, um, look to see whether it was operating or not. That would be if the city staff could cover the chimney, cap that chimney and check the sump pump to make sure it's operational. Those are two things that we really should be, uh, having done immediately. As part of our selective, uh, interior selective demolition work, we are removing, um, a lot, the old lights. You know, when we remove a suspended ceiling system, we're removing lights. There's a lot of surface mounted outlets. There's all of that mechanical electrical plumbing that isn't used, should be cleaned out as part of that selective demolition. And we've talked to the engineer today of making sure that we are providing that power to the sumps so that we're not jeopardizing or causing problems as part of our selective demolition work.
When you apply the surface, uh, repairs on the terracotta, you apply it to the entire face or just spot?
So, um, typically, it is just to the area that has spalled off or is gone. If you apply it over the top of the glaze, it's not necessarily going to accomplish anything. There are some glazed pieces that are, are going to have cracking or crazing. And because it's skyward facing, then in those conditions, we would apply it over, over the top of that surface when that glaze is already starting to show signs of heavy wear and tear.
Yeah, so on the horizontal surfaces, you would do a hundred percent on the unit. And that's also again, going to help preserve the exposed face by keeping moisture.
Correct.
Migrating from into the clay.
Right.
I noticed on the slides, the interior slides, it showed the mold most severe. It's got a pattern of the furniture. Most of it looks like it was behind some item. Where it was exposed to the light, there wasn't any. So, airflow could have been causing some of the issues with-
Yes.
Mold growth.
So, what-
Down in there.
You, you're correct. With, with mold, you need food, you need moisture, and that's what allows the mold spores to grow. Just having the movement of air can dry out that moisture. So, it actually slows or prohibits the growth of mold. So, when you have furniture or other things up against walls, uh, like the old radiators or other shelves or whatever it may be, you have a higher likelihood of mold growth occurring where there's no airflow. Now, right now, we don't have any airflow. We don't have fans going, we don't have de, dehumidifiers going, and we don't have any kind of air movement with the old furnaces and, and systems that you have.
So, part of the demolition, interior demolition will include removal of, uh, existing, uh, HVAC plumbing fixtures.
Correct.
Exposed waste lines or whatever.
The waste lines, um, um, was a little bit more of a discussion with our engineer. And, um, I think what we're recommending for you at this stage is we, we pull all of those plumbing fixtures. But because many of those waste lines are embedded in plaster ceilings or in floor systems, it may be better for us to wait to see what the final use will be and where restrooms need to be. And then we can take care of the removal of the waste lines. They do need to be capped. Obviously, they're tied to a city sewer, so we would have sewer gas in the building if we didn't cap them, plug them.
For the floor mounted, uh, toilets or lavatories, since the underground cast iron would be questionable and it'd be abandoned on any new work.
Right.
Is the demolition now going to include a permanent sealing of those instead of just a, a rubber plug? Are you going to include that it be grouted full for a permanent abandonment?
We were just estimating that it would be a temporary plug. And that's why that design contingency is in there. That if you felt like that was in the best interest of the project to go ahead and permanently close them, we can add that in, into the scope.
Yeah, for permanent, it'd probably be better to cut out the slab to actually put a cap on the cast iron.
Yep. I do think, uh, work like that, and the reason why we didn't include it, uh, is that we believe we'll be cutting into the concrete slab to do the work for whatever you want to use the building for. So, at the time, contractors there saw cutting concrete for other work, that's the time to cap.
Much more efficient.
It is.
Yeah.
More cost effective.
Instead of dragging the equipment in twice, bring it in once.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you recommend, uh, dehumidifiers and fans in the building at this, at this point?
We always do, we do. Uh, what we've seen over time, when, uh, buildings set for a longer period of time without air movement or without dehumidification, the finished materials would deteriorate more quickly. And as they deteriorate, that means the repair costs potentially go up when you're trying to then in the future renovate the building. So, I always recommend that you do have dehumidifiers running, that you have fans blowing just to keep air. Many times when we, and I've used the term, I think, the last time I was here, mothballing, when we don't have air conditioning or heat, um, we many times set up a system where through window openings that are protected so water didn't get in, we can at least get airflow through the building. And that's a part of allowing a building to, to dry out. With the, with the potential that we're going to move to, uh, tightening up the exterior, of course, of the building, putting in the new windows, depending on what the city wants to do, how quickly they might want to renovate it, it may not be as much of an issue. But to answer your question, I always recommend that happening right now. If, if you walk through the building, like you, you've probably seen more peeling paint than when everybody moved out of the building. And that's an indication of what happens.
Then my other question was when, um, Andrew Pitts was here. As far as the steering committee, he had originally talked about, in the presentation he made and the, and the dollar figures that he presented, at that point, he indicated a potential of eight to nine hundred thousand dollars worth of historical tax credits. So, uh, I know we're, we're, we're early in the game on that. But, but you still see that if, if we proceed forward, that that's still attainable? Or is that, or you can't answer that actually right now?
I really can't answer it. But if you look at the scope that we've defined and, as I mentioned, if this is a one point two million dollar project and if some of the work isn't allowed, is an allowable expense, and then, of course, there's a discounted for the sale, you're still talking about potentially two hundred thousand dollars or more of a tax credit for this initial phase. Obviously, renovation costs are more, uh, on the interior than selective demolition. So, it all depends on the, the need of the building. And when you're dealing with an old building, I always describe, there's two costs. One is that cost to, uh, take care of deferred maintenance. And in a way, that's what this first phase is, buttoning up the exterior. The second cost, though, occurs with what kinds of changes do you need to make to this older building to make it function for a modern use? And that really depends on the program of the use and, and what you need to have happen to it. And that's why it's, it's difficult to answer the question.
I just wanted to say, we did have dehumidifiers running in that building up prior to them doing the mold testing and stuff that we're running for several months. David could probably answer that because he's the one that, that put them in. And also the, we had the sump pump, sump pump was working and then we had an issue over the winter where the, the pipe froze and, and broke. But, um, that, you know, drained it out. And we had Newtons come and repair that. So, that sump pump that was in that, um, old boiler room was, you know, it, it, we had an issue with it over the winter and then we had it fixed. That was after we left, so we did have that maintained. Now, the one in the front, Terry may be able to speak to, because I think, I think his guys might have installed that. But the last time he looked at it, I think he said it was functioning, but he could probably answer that. Because there's two sump pumps that I'm aware of over there.
That's correct, yes.
Now, there's another one in the elevator pit.
Is there? And that one, I don't know if it's, maybe Terry or David could speak to that. But I know the boiler room, the one was working because we had it worked on and it was working after we left. And then we, we had that real hard freeze and it froze that pipe in the wall as it was draining out. So, they came in and, and repaired that and got that one going again.
Yeah, yeah, all of them need to be reevaluated to make sure they're functioning, but also where they discharge because still open and not congested.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question. Is this historical restoration, is what you consider this historical restoration?
I call it rehabilitation.
Rehabilitation.
Because the plan is you want this old building to function as a modern building.
Right, so that's my question is if, because you were talking about selective demolition interior saving some things. Now, just historical restoration or rehabilitation? You still, don't you go back to a certain period and say, here's where we're, here's where we're going to from here on? You're not going back to nineteen sixty?
No.
But you might say the last major renovation was this year.
Right.
So, we're going to kind of go to that with, with had those interior walls.
Well, so rehabilitation, um, the standards that are used both for state law review as well as the tax credit review, understand that you're rehabilitating this building, you're not restoring it to a specific period in time. But you are trying to, uh, preserve some of the important character defining features that the building has. And so, it may be finishes and features, it may be shapes of certain rooms. But we always understand that the building has to change. You need new heating, air conditioning, plumbing, you know, it has to function. You need spaces that function for modern use. So, the standards that are used allow change to occur. We do, through the standards, they encourage you to, um, respect the character of the old building. Because in fact, if you're trying to design to the character of the building, it's going to be timeless. Its design will be timeless rather than, oh, that was a nineteen eighties renovation or a twenty eleven renovation, you know? So, it's not a restoration, it is a rehabilitation. So it's not a restoration, it is a rehabilitation.
So instead of just going through and gutting the interior of the building completely and starting over with a whole new, like you say, you're rehabilitating, let's bring it back to, you know, gut it and then design a whole new, modern, efficient floor plan?
No, I understand your question now. Okay, and the reason, and the reason why we are at this early stage are suggesting, let's remove the nonhistoric components, but let's not be overzealous with what we're removing. Because we always have to justify to the reviewers why we are removing historic material. And so it's a balance act. So if as part of a full rehabilitation project, I can say, we're saving this material, we're saving this character, but we need to modify this to make it work, they can say, overall, you're meeting the Secretary of Interior standards. If at a selective demolition standpoint, I just say, we're going to gut it, I can guarantee they'll say, no, that it won't meet the standards and isn't allowed, and you certainly won't be able to claim any tax credits for any of the work.
Even if you take some of the, say, this is historic door, frame, or whatever, but you don't use it there, you use it somewhere else. You take it out, you store it, you incorporate it back, is that still doesn't work?
Still doesn't work. There's a real art.
We don't mess up the tax credits.
There is a real art to making this work. I do, though, think it's important that they don't try to lock you in time. And it is, what is important about the building, what are the character-defining features? And that's what, when Ian and I go through and we look, in fact, our first report tried to classify spaces. What are the spaces that had the highest integrity? And in their mind, what is most historically significant and has highest integrity? Usually, that's the public spaces, so you know you're going to want to treat them with more respect. When you move into more private offices, then it's a lower classification, you're allowed to make more changes. In spaces that were secondary, you can do almost anything you want and still meet the standards and still claim the tax credits. So it's a balance.
Thanks.
Good. No more questions?
Could we rearrange the agenda a little bit? Jeff has to leave, and there's a couple items on here that he needs to be here for that are a little later, if that's possible. Items six C? Mainly.
Six C and the food vending?
It's the six C text amendment, transient vendor license, food truck vendor license.
Okay. Okay. Items for commission action, we're going to move to item C. Consider a text amendment to the zoning code, specifically Article 11, transient vendor, section 62 dash three three zero through section 62 dash three three seven. Consider an amendment to Article 11 transient vendor license and creating a new category for a food truck vendor license. Item, item C.
Mayor, Abby is going to present this item for us. Steve worked on this.
Okay. Abby, proceed.
Hi, everybody. I'm Abby Hebert. I'm the planning intern for the City of Independence this summer. So this has been my baby while I've been here, and I've been working on it, compiling information from larger cities, surrounding towns, to see what other cities in southeast Kansas are doing for food trucks and how they're treating it, because it's had some licensing issues in Independence from the city clerk's office. They're not sure if they need business license with the transient vendors, because some of them are staying longer. So I've gone through different cities, and I included that in your agenda packet from surrounding ones, and come up with the proposal of adding the food truck vendor license along with Article 11, section 62, to amend that, to include food trucks, as well as amending Appendix D regarding the fees for it. So a food truck would be defined as any person, firm, or business who does not have any, who does not have an established place of business within the corporate limits of the city who sells or offers to sell food and/or beverages from any vehicular truck, enclosed trailer, or other mobile food unit, or other mobile unit approved by the governing body, which is parked and not moving within the city limits along the street, parking lot, or on a private property, but with the written consent of the owner of the property where situated. In the case of a street or other publicly-owned property, such written consent must be obtained from the governing body. The vendors would also have to fill out an application, which has a $10 application fee, and it would designate basic personal information, vehicular information, sales description, including their Kansas sales tax, and determine the length of their state and their park destination. The prices for the decided length of time is on the application. There's a checklist for them, simple enough. They can check it off as they get things completed, and I guess that's as simple a put as it can be. There's also a flyer that can go online. Kansas City included one for theirs, which I thought was quite handy, that allows any interested party to just go on the, go online, see this PDF, see what they need to do, and get their things done without being confused with ordinance lingo. So with that, I'll open it up to questions and comments.
It was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I understand it was approved.
Yes, the zones for it were approved. They did everything but residential for it.
Okay. Yeah, Jeff.
Paul, I want to say I'm glad we have a planning intern, because this took a lot of time. And I'm not sure city staff or myself would have had that time. But many months ago, the staff brought to you the situation with the food vendor truck.
Right.
It really didn't fall. I mean, the current transient vendor license is...
Three days for $25.
Yeah, three days for 25 bucks. So if you wanted to go year-round, that'd be like 3,000 bucks.
Is that the snow cone?
I think it's Rick's ribs is who we're talking about. That one too, okay. And so I think that we've let it slide, and you said study it, and it's now been studied. The food vendor would create a new category to cover those with a more reasonable pricing, but still recognizing that your local businesses that invest in their locations and pay taxes need some degree of protection.
Right.
It's not any, Tom, Dick, or Harry can just come in and compete with them with little or no overhead. I think that was what she addressed very well.
And do you want me to go over the pricings and kind of the breakdowns of those, or are you guys?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
When I looked at Tulsa here several months ago, and I'm going from memory, which I probably shouldn't, but some of those food trucks, they designated an area that they would be set up at. But then they also had the ability to, being Tulsa, change and go to a different area of the town.
Right.
And it required, did you, I'm trying to figure out what they actually required. I think that they had to fill out another permit that allowed them to change locations. And then the other part was, were they able to stay on the premise over 12 hours? Or did they have to vacate the premise?
I'm not sure on the relocation of whether they're in the food truck park, like an industrial park but for food trucks, whether they had to do separate permits for that in town. I didn't quite look into that. I was more interested in the fees and how they permitted that in the city. But I can look into that and report back. But I figured, to make sense, it would make sense that they would have two separate permits, because that's for a separately-zoned area that's in a food truck compared to the private property where they would be that they're parked at.
Okay.
I think the key is on private property, they have to get written consent of the owner. And if they're going to be on the street, they would have to get your written consent, because the city commission would be considered the owner of any city-owned property.
And most of them here, if they're utilizing existing parking lots, then on private property, like use Rick's rib, for example, they're out at Hugo's. If they wanted to come to GNW, they could relocate without any...
Correct. They would have the permit, especially if he goes for the year permit. He's allowed to park in any location for a year with written permission.
Yeah. Yeah, I could see the necessity when you look at parking on a street. There's a lot more to consider, which street, where, and traffic counts. So that would require a total new permit to locate there. I don't remember seeing in the ordinance a time limit that, like Louis mentioned, 12 hours, I think Tulsa, 12 hours, and they had to relocate to do their housekeeping, cleaning, and then come back.
Correct.
Our ordinance doesn't say anything. They could bring their food truck to Hugo's, leave it, go home, come back the next morning, whatever. We didn't specify.
Correct. That isn't included in this one. That's a very good idea, though.
I think like when we had the snow cone, when she was planning on leaving it there, she wasn't going to take it away. It was just going to be parked there for like the summer or whatever.
Yeah, because one of the things that I think Tulsa took into consideration is sanitation, that you had to relocate it to sanitize and clean, and they didn't want it cleaned there in the parking lot. That was what they put the...
In the flyer that I provided for him, it does say, keep a clean area for the food truck, rid of any food and trash receptacle, trash deposits. So I guess that kind of is their warning, so to say, as to keep your area clean and tidy. But in the ordinance, in the proposed ordinance, there isn't anything regarding length of stay like Tulsa's is.
I think their consideration where you're frying and cooking, that you're going to have to use more intensive cleaners and maybe steam clean.
Yeah.
But it looked like a good beginning. Not that we're at the end where we need to be, but it's a good start to allow food vendors to start operating. And then yet, as conditions come up, we might have to tweak it. But, you know, I think it gives a lot of flexibility to the vendor as they want to start business. And yet, when we see issues coming along, we can always modify. There, you hate to come in and go too hard and create problems that aren't really going to be there. And so I thought you did a good job.
Thank you.
Researching and presenting it to us. Questions?
How did we come up with the costs?
I gathered them from Kansas City, Tulsa, and Wichita. And Wichita seemed to be the most relatable for the City of Independence. And so the most comparable from my research to any of the other cities is Wichita, so the pricing's from there.
So they charge $400 a year?
Yes, and they don't do a two-week one. It goes for a month, six months, and a year.
I just remember when we discussed this last time, we were saying, well, that we have a snow cone facility that's there year-round and probably pays a couple thousand a year in taxes. So is it really fair for somebody to come in here during the season and pay very little or nothing? So I just wondered if that 400 is even really fair?
Right.
Or frankly, if that's still a little on the low side in my mind, but...
When you break it down, it is a dollar and 10 cents per day for them to be on that location and only $33 a month. So in fairness, it's probably not equitable to a brick and mortar. But for the sake of what I've proposed, I don't feel like we want to run business off for people that want to, like in the survey, people wanted more food options. A great way to bring that in is through food trucks.
Yeah, I love the idea of having more food trucks.
Yeah.
But you don't want to create a stationary unit.
I don't want five food trucks parked in GNW's parking lot year-round.
For year after year.
Even month after month, for me, would be too much.
Yeah.
But I do think it's a good starting point. Like you said, we could always tweak it if...
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
I think when you go by and look at Rick's ribs, I think, doesn't he, he moves the trucks?
Every day.
Every day. So you're not looking at the truck there 24 hours a day.
Right.
You know, 365 days a year.
But if you have a food truck that comes in, and then they set up their picnic tables and trash receptacles, and it's permanent?
Yeah. I got a problem with that.
Yeah.
And like some larger cities that you see, like in Tulsa, they do have food truck parks that allow businesses, or businesses and employees to go strictly there, so they have closer food options. Like in New York City, they have like tax incentives for the people that have healthier food trucks that bring in whole foods and organic things that aren't quite, is it quite Independence, Kansas, this game? But those are good options to have in just different ways.
We are so health-conscious.
Yes, yes.
So hot dog is not a health food?
Depends on your state of mind.
Yeah.
They are all be...
That's right.
All. All. Any further questions?
Well, I think I did.
Have you had time to review the proposed ordinance and ready to take action on it?
I think I'm okay with moving forward. Like you said, we can tweak it as needed in the future, because I, we need to start somewhere, I think, and this is a good starting point.
So if we're ready, I'll call for a motion?
Okay, it's here somewhere. Okay, I move to adopt the ordinance, modifying ordinance number 3776 to include changing Article 11, section 62 dash 330 through section 62 dash 337 to include food trucks, food truck zoning modifications, updated fees, and text amendments.
I'll second.
Motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Next item.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item D, considering approving a lease agreement with the Kansas Department of Revenue and the City of Independence for temporary use of space in building, building D.
So you're going forward, you're not going back to the ones you skipped?
No, I thought, is that the only one? I thought you needed all three contracts.
Oh, okay. No, that's fine.
I think that's the only one, I think. The next contract's identical to everything we've signed so far.
Yeah. I just thought that when you said contracts, it was all three of them, so...
Just this one.
Okay. Okay, then, in that case, let's go back up so we can go in order and not get really confused instead of just confused.
Mostly.
Okay, so now, items for commission action, item A. Consider setting the date of September 27, 2018, at 5:30 PM for a public hearing to consider the condemnation of the structures located at 717 Washington and 209 South Earl. South Earl? Earl runs east and west, doesn't it? No, no, it doesn't.
No, South Earl.
Yeah. I know.
You almost had me confused.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah.
So we've received several complaints about both of these properties. And as you can see from the pictures, there are some concerns there. So it is certainly staff's recommendation, after having looked at them, that we do set a date for September 27, 2018, to consider these for condemnation. I think that gives, the two months gives the property owners sufficient time to look at the properties and assess what their plans are going to be with those two properties.
Any contact with the owners?
Not as of yet.
And the owner isn't present tonight? Okay. With that, I'll go ahead and call for a motion.
I move, if we're considering both 209 and...
Just a motion for each one.
Each one, okay. I move to set the date of September 27, 2018, for a public hearing to consider condemnation of the structure located at 209 South Earl Street.
I'll second.
We were at Washington, 717 Washington.
Oh, I was looking at the screen. Excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I move to set the date of September 27, 2018, for a public hearing to consider condemnation of the structure located at 717 Washington Street.
I'll second that one.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Now... Now, two oh nine, South Earl. None? Any contact with the owner?
Not, not, not as of yet.
That would be pretty difficult from the title of your letter.
What's that?
The deceased.
It identified that they were deceased. I was just really hoping to see something here we didn't know about. How you got a response from them.
No. No, not yet. So, um, yeah, and I don't know if, if there's a trust or if there's any other organization or relative or any family member that is overseeing this property, so.
I guess that's something between now and if we set a hearing, then Jeff can advise on how to research that.
Right.
So, any questions?
Yeah.
Okay. Do I have a call for motion on it?
I move to set the date of September twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen, for a public hearing to consider condemnation of the structure located at two oh nine South Earl Street.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Uh, item B, consider awarding the low bid for replacement of dimming racks along with all software and hardware necessary to incorporate it with the existing theatrical lighting system with an add alternate for eight small smart lights.
Tim Powell's here to cover this item.
Tim?
Yeah, so we had met a couple months back about the dimming modules going bad and the manufacturer of them being extinct. And so we put together a design for a, uh, replacement for the dimming modules so that your existing theatrical light system can stay, uh, working. Uh, then there was also an add alternate to be able to add eight of the moving color lights, like you would see, uh, in some of the Neo Walla productions and some of the, uh, plays and such that has been rented in the past. And then also part of that add alternate was adding part, adding, uh, a piece of equipment to the existing console to make it easier to control those lights. So this would help with your guys' productions that you're putting on. And then also this would help Neo Walla, uh, with having to rent less lights for some of their productions.
Yeah, we exceeded our proposal, is.
Yeah, so the, uh, on the base bid, uh, when we had, uh, done the initial walkthrough and looked at it, we expected it to be closer to sixty-five thousand. Uh, once we got in with the vendors, started looking at it, we realized that more of the system was proprietary to that non-existing manufacturer anymore. Uh, so all, such as the dimming mod, or the, not the, sorry, the dimming modules, but the wall units to be able to control the lights at the walls, those have to be replaced as well as the cabling and the wiring going from the upstairs dimmer rack to that. Um, and then also some of the, uh, cables that are upstairs in that closet area from the, from the racks to the control system downstairs. Some of those wires were proprietary to the other manufacturer. So those had to be replaced. And we weren't expecting that, uh, before we got into the project.
The equipment that you specified and received bids on, is it all proprietary now?
No, uh, it is not. Uh, the, it's an E T C system, so the equipment, uh, is a manufacturer that isn't going anywhere. They're, they're the number one manufacturer for theatrical lighting systems and even, um, commercial lighting systems. Uh, but the cabling that they use now is no longer proprietary. Um, they've kind of gone to a, a straight standard for all lighting, that it's all either over Ethernet or D M X. Uh, this old manufacturer, twenty, thirty years ago, when they put in that other system, uh, there were no standards then. Everybody did what they wanted to. They happened to have chosen a medium that's no longer supported.
So if we have a, a component fail, are we tied to the company that you specified? Or are there other components that we'll plug in and, and operate?
There are other components that could plug in and operate, um, as things start failing ten, fifteen, twenty years from now.
Okay. So we're not gonna be trapped like we were originally?
Correct, correct.
So by going with the greater expense. Now, the alternate, uh, it provides for the smart lights?
It provides eight of the smart lights, uh, which is kind of a minimum that you want for, uh, some of you, the smaller theatrical performances or, or smaller bands. It is probably, I'm gonna guess, half to a, a third of what Neo Walla may use. So they'll probably still rent, uh, eight more, maybe twelve more for an event, um, depending on who's coming in. But this would also help them out with not having to rent as many lights for their events.
But this was not included in our original.
No, and that's why we have as an alternate, is the, the base bid is to replace the dimming modules and racks to make your existing system functional.
So the, if we took the base bid, we, we busted our budget by about twenty thousand dollars.
And we could come back and work the other lights in, in a separate time?
Yes, those are, uh, those are, uh, you are able to go in and do that afterwards.
Okay.
Does it save us any money to do it now?
Uh, yeah, on the installation side of it. Once they're, this, especially A to Z theatrical, they're out of Kansas City. So if they're already down here, you're gonna save some cost on the installation.
Where are the other companies located?
Uh, Harvest A V Solutions was Kansas City, and Associated Theatrical was Springfield, Missouri.
When you say cost savings, what, what do you estimate? Any idea? Guess?
I mean.
Hate to put you on the spot.
Yeah, I, I mean, you're probably talking a, a couple few more thousand dollars. If it's fourteen thousand, two hundred for them to do it while they're here, it may be seventeen, eighteen for them to come back down and do it, uh, at the time. The high end, I would guess that.
Okay.
And, and the rental cost, what, do you have an idea what that was when they've had a rent?
I don't. I don't know if that was something that Kelly had discussed with Neo Walla or.
They didn't tell us.
Okay.
Yeah, it would make better use of our money to put eight in, to operate for most small events and then have to rent additional to fill out than to try and do the whole.
Have enough for their peak needs.
Right.
Yeah, I, I think it would be unnecessary for you guys to have the twelve to sixteen on your own. I think eight's gonna cover everything that you are hosting here. Uh, and then Neo Walla can, for those peak moments, can come in with the extra equipment. And with this system that we're specifying, easily plug into it and be able to operate those lights with this system.
How old are the lights that are there now?
I don't know the answer to that. We were working through the age of those.
Were they with the original renovation?
Okay.
Which is, time's gone so fast. What's it been, ten years?
So, so your existing lights you have are, um, they're not moving or colored lights, they're just stationary lights. Those lights, the, the housing of them lasts twenty, thirty years. It's just the bulbs that you replace as needed. What we're talking about putting in would be electronic moving colored lights. That would have a lifespan of ten to twelve years, twelve to fifteen years.
The whole fixture?
Yeah, the whole fixture.
What is the light source on these?
L E D.
Are all these companies comparable in your mind?
Yeah, um, all of them are, are certified and capable of doing the E T C system for the dimming modules and such.
Okay. So it'd be no benefit to go in with somebody that's not the low bidder?
No, not in this case, no.
Okay.
But by going to L E D., we're gonna cut the heat and cut the energy consumption?
Uh, you're not, you won't be cutting anything, 'cause you're not replacing any of your lights, you're adding those eight lights.
Okay. Okay. I thought we were replacing some lights.
But if you needed the colors, you're putting the gels over the old lights and you're not using those gels with the old lights that are using all that energy, you're using these L E D. lights instead.
Correct.
So in that, in that way.
So this will actually be replacing, you'll use these in lieu of some of the existing lights?
And you'll use them in lieu of manpower, having to get up and climb up there and put color gels. And then that one color gel for that entire production is red versus that, you, yeah, you're stuck with it for that production and versus that same light can be red for this scene, blue over here for this scene, and green over here for this scene.
You have to get up in the rigging to do that? Bring it down. Now, for the, if we had the fourteen thousand, it'd be better to do it now, 'cause each, each one is gonna go up another two to three thousand to come back later.
It's a big one. It's not one point two million.
No, but, but it's about a third higher than we estimated.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
We could just take that out of your fee, I'm guessing.
Ooh, I think my fee was only like four or five thousand, so.
He's a bargain, yeah.
We can bill you for the rest.
So this is coming out of the special use sales tax?
Yeah. And we're gonna need to modify projects in the special use sales tax to, to do this too.
And I have that in there. But I think I, if I, I put it in for the twenty eighteen revised, this dollar figure.
Well, but it's still money we could use somewhere else.
No, that's right.
That's, you know, I'm still gonna have to look at somewhere else, but, um... Any other questions?
No, sir.
You have a good question?
No.
It's thirty-six thousand dollars over.
I.
The whole package?
Yeah, I think so.
Whole package? Yeah.
Well.
Yeah, I, I think the advantage is, you know, I hate to first see it that far over and have to come up with the extra money. But the benefits that we can gain now by doing it all at once.
Yeah. Memorial Hall is a treasure, it really is, and I, I think we need to take care of it.
The flexibility is what we're, we're talking about, is being able to go with the multicolors from one fixture, the L E D.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be something that helps set you guys apart and allow you to be more, uh, you'd be able to attract to other acts and be able to rent it out for other events, 'cause that's just gonna be an added benefit to potential renters.
Yeah. Any other discussion? Then I'll call for a motion.
You wanna tackle this one, or you want me to?
Let me find it here. Here we go.
Good, I'm glad. I wanted you to.
Okay. I move to award the low bid to A to Z Theatrical for a lighting upgrade in the auditorium of Memorial Hall, consisting of replacement of dimming racks along with all software and hardware needed to incorporate it with the existing theatrical lighting system with an add alternate for eight smart lights in the amount of one hundred and one thousand dollars.
I'll second.
A motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Apologize for your late night.
No, it's all good.
And we'll send you that bill.
While he is here, um.
Tim.
He, he specked out a module for us that we could hook into Larry's system that would allow us to, um, digitally record these meetings so that we can get them uploaded quicker and, 'cause right now Larry is having to, to go home, he's having to upload them into a DVD, then I have to take the DVD and I have to turn that into an M P four. So we both have to process it twice. This module that, that Tim has found would allow us to, um, upload it onto a hard drive and then we could stick a thumb drive in and we could have the digital recording, you know, right after the meeting. I think it may even, does this one live stream?
It does. So part of the system that we designed is, or that we, that, that we specified is one that once you, it, or if, or when you decide to do a full upgrade in here, this piece would be incorporated into that. That would also allow you to have live streaming to Facebook or YouTube or whatever other medium you guys would choose to live stream someday.
But it is something that could get us started, at least to get that digital recording, 'cause it has been kind of an issue, 'cause if I'm gone like the next day, then it's, sometimes I don't get the commission meeting up until Monday, then, you know, people, you know, they always think it's a big conspiracy if I take it off on Friday, apparently don't get the commission meeting up. But this would make it much easier, 'cause then I'd have a digital recording and I could get it uploaded much quicker. And, um, so he got us a cost for that, and I think it was like forty-nine hundred dollars for the base one.
I believe so.
Installed for that piece that would fit in, uh, and I've talked to Larry about it too, that would work in with his equipment. So I just wanted to let you know about that, why Tim was here, in case you had any questions about that equipment, because he's the technical guy, I'm not.
Another forty-nine minute work.
We're rocking and rolling.
Yeah. I thought the heat got that money tree that we had.
Well, we were thinking, we weren't thinking right now, we were thinking like maybe next year or something to consider it in the, like, the capital program, the, you know, five thousand dollars for that module to get the digital recording, so we get the meetings up quicker.
But we could discuss it while Tim's here.
Yeah.
I just thought, 'cause he's not, you know, since he was here, that's the only reason I brought it up. If you have questions on the technical side. I wasn't saying tonight, I'm saying when you're looking at your capital stuff coming up, um, that piece of it.
Okay, good. I thought you had your hand, you know, I was thinking money now.
No, no, no. I'm thinking next year, when you do the, when you're doing the other budget stuff, but since he's here.
I thought, man, these guys are gonna beat me up.
Because I was afraid if you asked me questions about it, I'd still wanna give you the wrong information.
Yeah. Okay. Where does the, so he would connect into the module direct here, or?
Yeah, so in the current setup, it would be a portable thing that he would set up in his, uh, booth in the back, that he would then take his camera and audio, plug into this device. It's about the size of a DVD player, uh, and so it would record digitally to it. And then as soon as you're done, it, like you said, it gives you a digital file that you, then you can upload to whatever site you need. Uh, in the future, if we were to do a full renovation of this space, then it would go into the rack and it would be controlled through the multi, 'cause it can handle the multiple cameras or it can handle the single, single camera. So we're not limiting you by the device we're choosing right now. Um, it, it's fully expandable for anything and everything you'd wanna do.
And it's also would be better quality too, because you're not reprocessing the, the video two different times.
Mr. McHugh, don't you do some editing typically?
Yes, I do. I do, I do remove anything in the beginning before it's five-thirty.
Right.
Which may be thirty seconds.
Right.
And, um.
You bleep out the mayor's bad words and things like that?
Oh, you have to do that.
Right.
Um, and then the tail end may have an extra ten or fifteen seconds that I take off. But the meeting itself is all intact. You have an executive session. Uh, I may record for two or three seconds as you guys are getting up. We fade to black, we fade back up. There's a, that's an edit right there. But that's basically, you know, type, I do have a title. And then maybe a few video productions on the tail end, but that's, that's the extent of it.
It's very minimal.
It's very, it is minimal, yes.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And the, the only, to clarify, one other thing that you mentioned to me, Laurie, was that when the meeting is excessively long and you have to insert another tape, that, that there's a, there may be a few seconds that.
Well, yes.
Lost and re.
I could go to about three hours and five minutes, so.
We never have long meetings.
Usually you're much under that. But we have exceeded that a couple, three times. And, and yes, there is a loss of a few seconds to change. That's minimal.
But that's still just gonna be a one-on-one digital file.
It's gonna be a one-digital file, that, 'cause this, yeah. This, this can record up to eighty gig, uh, which is enough. It's twelve hours of recording. And if you're having that, then you don't wanna put that on the internet anyways.
Okay. I'm not asking you to vote for approval, but I don't have any more questions.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
I don't either.
Okay.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, item D. Consider approving a lease agreement with the Kansas Department of Revenue and the City of Independence for temporary use of space in building D.
I was contacted by them. Um, this is for the driver's license office, and I personally experienced this, 'cause I had to go to, uh...
cause I had to go to Parsons last Friday to renew my license. But, um, but this would allow them to stay open in Independence until they get their new offices renovated. They have found a location, Dr. Osborne's old office, and they're gonna have that renovated and they're planning to relocate there. So they're thinking probably three to five months that they would be there. And it would be outside of our administrative offices and that old, uh, like nurses station or whatever it was there, that would be occupying that space, so it will be quite busy up there, but we know it's important to have that office in Independence cause it is an inconvenience for people to have to go to Parsons or wherever to get their license renewed.
Will it harm our productivity?
I mean, I, I don't think so, I mean, I think we need to work with them, because it's important to the citizens to be able to have those services locally. And so, I mean, we can, we, it, it won't be an issue, we'll, we'll, we'll get through it, we need to do what's best for the citizens, so. I know this is a, something that's been a concern.
Just for a point of interest, um, I heard that, uh, the city of Coffeyville has been lobbying the state aggressively to get this driver's license bureau to move to their city hall.
Yeah, yeah, I saw that.
You saw that?
I saw that in writing.
Yeah, and so they've been working on, but, but, but they stayed here, they wanted to stay in Independence.
Yes, so do you have any questions?
I don't.
Questions, then I'll call for a motion.
I move to approve the real estate lease agreement with the Kansas Department of Revenue.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carry. Item E, consider approving a lease agreement with the State Board of Indigent Defense Services and the City of Independence for the use of space at one oh eight East Chestnut Street.
The state also contacted me and, and asked if we had any other additional spaces, that the only space I was aware of was in that building that's, uh, split, it has Studio Four on one side, and then that other offices that hasn't been occupied, I don't think since, uh, the real estate company was in there. And, um, they are interested in leasing that, this also would probably be a temporary, uh, thing, because I think they're looking at going into the same building as the driver's license place, I don't think it'll be a full year, but, you know, I don't know for sure, but that's, I believe what they're looking at doing. So, uh, the difference would be, it would be at this other building, and the city will pay utilities, and so the rate is adjusted for that, and so, um, it's, uh, seven hundred dollars a month for that.
Question?
Yeah, I, I do have a question, uh, first of all, I was unaware that the city owned this building. And if this is a state office that's going into the building, does the building itself meet ADA requirements for the state? One oh eight East Chestnut?
David can answer that.
No, it's not ADA, ADA accessible for the state, which I think they're aware of, but I think it's temporary just till they can get to this other place, the bathroom is not accessible, I don't even believe the interest is.
Well, the problem is, is their contract says that it will be ADA accessible.
I don't think they marked it though, I think they left it unmarked.
Well, I don't, I don't know if that's optional, because.
Yeah, I don't.
It's federal law.
And we made it clear to them, I mean, it's as is, so.
Yeah, cause it says, uh, well.
Yeah, I did specifically tell them when we went after, cause I took David over there to look at it, and I told them specifically that the bathroom was not, definitely not accessible, and they're aware of that, and they're coming to look at it tomorrow.
Yeah. Well, yeah, it, it does say the following minimum standards for accessible space shall be required, ADA checklist, accessible parking, accessible route from accessible entrance to primary function, accessible toilets.
So we have to have all that struck.
I don't think, I don't, it's a law, ADA is a law, I don't think legally anyone can strike ADA requirements, that if we lease, um, accessible space, we're liable, that if a complaint's filed, they would file us with suit, and also sue them, but then where we sign a contract that says that that's in there, then it all falls back upon us. And that's, the building's difficult to get it compliant.
Yeah, you're, you're not getting parking or anything.
And it's seven hundred a month, you're not.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause you take utilities even out of seven hundred a month, there's.
Yeah.
Not much money left.
Yeah, I think they'll, they'll see tomorrow very clearly that it's not an accessible building.
Yeah, I. I, I wouldn't vote to approve the contract, you know.
No, I wouldn't either, I, I guess I was the understanding that, that, that the reason why the state was limited, when they were looking for spaces, when they had to vacate the Independence Corporate Office or the RCO building, was that finding a facility that met all the ADA requirements that the state needs to have, so, you know, why would they consider or, or, uh, waive that? Coming into a building, but that's the requirements that they set up that, that, uh, you would have to meet in order for them to lease space in a building, so.
But they're, they're being kicked out of their building, and there, there's not a lot of options in town available for office space that are ADA compliant, so. Given that it's an emergency situation, they're only planning to stay there a few months, maybe there's, I mean.
Yeah, like I said, I made them very aware of it, and I sent them pictures and told them it was not accessible, and they still wanna come down and look at it, because they need some space, cause they have no place to go.
Gotcha. Why do we own that building?
Because you guys bought it?
We bought it? Wait a minute.
I, I think, not you, but I think you two were both on the commission when it came up.
You were on, yeah, it was.
Were you not on it?
Fred.
I know you were.
Yeah, Fred, Darrell and I, yeah, when it came up, uh, on the market, we considered looking at the advantage for owning the entire block.
Gotcha.
Of getting property as it comes for sale around Memorial Hall, cause there isn't, it's landlocked.
And not as much for building a parking lot, but where it's located with access into the loading dock. Giving some flexibility there.
So we don't have any more place we could put them in building D?
It's pretty full.
Okay, all right, we just topped it off, huh? Well.
So.
Yeah, for that little bit of money, it's not worth getting in any possibility of trouble with ADA requirements.
Is there a way we could have them do an addendum, that they would waive that because it's an emergency or something?
I, you know, how can, that would be like us waiving a, a law for someone, we can't, we can't waive a federal law.
But doesn't it have to be, don't they have to do, uh, like re, like upgrades or something to it for that to have to come into compliance?
When we bought it.
Even if we didn't make any structural modifications?
Yeah, ownership changes. Yeah, it's a federal law, there's no way the state can supersede a federal law. And I'm not an attorney, but.
Yeah, I just know like the restrooms in the old city hall weren't ADA compliant either.
Yeah, that's because it was built before nineteen ninety-one.
Well, this building was built in nineteen hundred, I looked it up.
But, yeah, ownership didn't change at city hall.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's just some of the.
Technicalities.
Yeah.
Once the ownership changed, then you have different regulations that you've gotta, you've gotta follow now, so.
Any ownership, or just cause the city owned it?
Any.
So it wouldn't matter who bought the building, whenever a building is bought or sold, then it automatically has to be brought up to ADA standards even.
Particularly where it's vacant.
If they aren't doing remodeling or anything.
The building was vacant, those changes.
It's half vacant.
Yeah, hold on, the vacant half's always. And more so because they're a public space. That, that man, that's mandatory immediately, that they have to provide accessibility to the handicap.
Well, I wondered about that, that's why I pointed that out to them and had David look at it, cause I was concerned about that.
Yeah. Any other questions? Then I'll call for a motion. Uh, no motion?
Motion.
So, do we just?
Just let it die?
Or?
Or you read it and then we?
Read it and go from there.
Go, okay. Consider approving a lease agreement with the State Board of Indigent Defense Services and the City of Independence for use of space at one oh eight East Chestnut Street.
I have a motion, we have a second.
That wasn't exactly the motion, but close enough.
Read back the motion that he gave you.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, let me do that over again.
Oh, okay.
That was my fault. I move to approve the real estate lease agreement with the State Board of Indigent Defense Services.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, feel bad.
Thank you.
I'll second, I guess.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Aye.
Aye.
Motion did not pass.
Gary, did you vote no on that?
I did.
Okay.
Uh, next item, consider adopting the two thousand eighteen revised, two thousand nineteen proposed budget for publication and setting the date of August fourteenth, two thousand eighteen at five thirty PM for a budget hearing. Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, I, I did look at this, and, um, there is still, I'm going off the certificate that was provide, that was signed off by the City of Independence, that was given to me by the Clerk of Montgomery County, and, uh, under liability insurance, there's showing, uh, the, uh, the one point nine two three figure, and this one is showing a one point nine three two, and it's consistently showed a one point nine three two, even on this revision.
Yeah, it did not change, based on what I had from the county.
He said the county was one point nine two three?
Yes.
Nine two three?
So we've transposed two numbers.
Maybe I did transpose it accidentally.
Okay, cause that numbers, that, that number stayed consistent through the revisions, and, but I've got the.
Uh, I, I will double.
Certificate from the county.
Triple check it tomorrow and make sure.
And she shows it.
Before we do any publishing on it, I'd revise it accordingly on it.
She shows it one point nine two three. And then my other question is, on the total tax levied in that amount, now we're looking at two million five ninety-nine, five, two million five ninety-nine, five thirty-nine, is that correct?
Well, so that's what we discussed, and as, as we talked about on Tuesday, wouldn't change this, but we go through, continue our process, let us get down to that figure, and then we, we'll change it. This can be changed, I mean, this, just cause you're just adopting it for publication.
Right, I, I understand that, but is that how we wanna send it out for publication? That we wanna make the corrections, and then when we send it out, it is, it is correct? I guess that's my question.
Well, I mean, so we're, we're still working on that to get us to that point. And then, of course, we'll, I think we're gonna have another, uh, budget session, and then the public hearing, and then you'll adopt whatever that final proposal is, which it, it can go down, it just can't go up.
Right, so at this point?
Cause what we proposed is this initially.
Okay. So at this point, we, we're not actually, uh, until this correction is made, we're not actually to the point where we're ready to adopt.
Yeah, you're not adopting the budget tonight, this is just adopting it for publication.
For publication, yes.
Yes.
So with a correction having to be made, we're not at the point where we're ready to adopt this for publication? I guess that's what I'm trying to say. Correct?
No, it, it can be published like this.
Are we gonna bring the number down from two six three five nine three two to two five nine nine five three nine? Are we gonna cut the thirty-six thousand out of the budget to make that change?
Yes, we're working on that.
If we're gonna do it, then we could go ahead and change.
Just change it, okay.
The number.
Okay.
Just don't add any, we won't add any more lights.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll make that change.
Okay.
Okay, so that'll be identical to the previous total tax levy of two million five hundred ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine? That was from twenty eighteen?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything? So then if, what, what we would do then is make a motion that the notice of budget hearing would be approved tonight. Uh, just, the date would be set, that this could be released with the modifications.
Okay. If we're gonna send it out, send it out with the, with the correct.
Yeah.
Information on it, so.
Okay.
So when they get it, this is it, this is what you see is what you, what you get.
Yeah, we could still change it, but.
Right.
Right, right, understand that.
We could still lower it.
Yeah.
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 Okay. Any other, then, do you wanna make the motion, or I'll call for the motion now?
Okay, call for the motion. So, okay. Let me back up here just a second. So, we're gonna make the corrections, and that's what will be published.
And that should be part of your motion.
Okay, okay. I'm ma, moved to adopt the twenty eighteen revised, twenty nineteen proposed budget with the, um.
Modification?
Modifications, uh, on the actual budget summary, is that be right? Okay. Uh, for publication and setting the date of August fourteenth, twenty eighteen at five thirty PM for a budget hearing.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion opposed, motion carry. Next item, uh, reports, uh, city minutes, do we have any questions concerning the minutes that were included in our packet?
There was a bunch of them.
There were. If not, um, next is city manager comments?
A couple of things, of course, I'm sure you're all aware, it's Mick Jagger's seventy-fifth birthday today, so I'm sure you're a little satisfaction tonight. On a serious note, uh, we do have a, I'd like Terry Lieberger to come up and talk a little bit about some water issues. We got some in, informed by the state today, you know, we've been underwater advisory and we haven't been getting water, and so just to keep you informed, not to alarm, but.
Yeah, yeah, just a heads up, I received an email from, uh, Kansas Department of Agriculture, Division of Water Resources at two thirty-nine PM today, and, uh, asking for our pumping information, meter readings and, and stuff. They, they're going to issue us a, uh, permission to pump water next week. Uh, the reason they're doing this is cause they're making protected relief. The reason they're doing this is because they're making protected releases from Elk City, which is contract water. I'm assuming that it's probably for Coffeyville Resources. And anytime they do that, they have to monitor what we're pumping and keep an eye on us, make sure we don't steal their water that they're paying for. But I went through and did some calculation, looking at, at releases and, and natural flows and from what I'm telling right, can tell right now, we're, we'll be fine. They, they won't modify our pumping rate at this point if my calculations are correct. We'll see what they come up with on Tuesday. But just wanted to give you a heads up, this is happening and it's because of the dry summer we're having. And if the trend continues with weather being dry and not getting a lot of precipitation, that this will become more severe as we go, so.
So it's pretty much just an administrative function, right? I mean, they're releasing water for Coffeyville's benefit and
Right.
They want to make sure we don't...
Want to make sure that we don't take their water, that there's plenty of, right now there's, from what I'm, I have calculated, there's 22 cubic feet per second of natural flow coming by us. There's some natural flows coming out of Toronto right now, they're doing some releases, so it's not an issue, but when Toronto comes down, which is pretty close to Conservation Pool, nope, they will be shutting the gates down. And once that flowing river comes down, then it will, it'll get a little more critical as to what we do.
So, we're allowed to pump so much per day or is it based upon per hour or?
When they give us a permission, they give us a total per day figure, but they also limit that to a certain amount per hour.
Okay.
So we have to be careful what we do and not exceed those because we, at that point, we have to start monitoring our hourly pumping rates and, and reporting those to the state, so.
So how, how's our consumption going on based upon what we're going to be able to draw? It's fine?
Right now, it's fine. But like I say, if the trend continues and the weather stays dry and, you know, we could get into some water conservation measures.
Now, we need some rain up north, don't we?
We need rain up north, not just right here locally, but we need a lot up north.
Yeah. Okay.
But like I say, just want to give you a heads up so nobody gets caught off guard.
Thanks, Terry.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. That's all. Okay, Commissioner comments? Nothing?
I just want to reiterate what when Vance made his presentation to us, that, that we go ahead and cap the area on the roof at the 1916 city hall and that we go ahead and, and put in fans and dehumidifiers, just start the process of removing that moisture from the building, taking steps that we need to do now to, to help alleviate the, the moisture that's already in the building. Good jump on that.
Right now, with some ventilation pulling the air out, the air's dry enough that, you know, maybe that's what, we need to get his recommendation on it to see. I think air movement is going to help a lot
Yeah.
Down there, and particularly with staff going in to finish removing furniture and records that, yeah, we need to get some air moving through there. That'll help a lot. Okay, that's good. I had a, a question. We talked about it before, or maybe not a question. Even like tonight, we saw incidents, incidents in people or groups wanting to partner or co-sponsor. And I don't know if we've really got a policy that defines what partnering or co-sponsor means. And my concern is that if it's not defined, then how can we limit somebody that we might not want to partner with? That, you know, would associate with, right now, is it broad that anybody that says, hey, I want to partner with you? And we have to partner because we partner with one group or, you know, it's used a lot and it's mainly just wanting us to allow them to use the space for free. You know, and this is probably a legal research item, but I got concerned with things, the way they come up, maybe we need to have a definition or some guidelines or some limitations of what that would, would include that's in the rare case that there is something we shouldn't, that we've got justification and just saying, no, we don't want to.
Yeah, I mean, maybe Kelly can expand more, but my understanding, since coming here, it was kind of like nonprofit or community events like upcoming debate, which is the latest one, those types of things, but not a not-for-profit, say a show comes in. Although the last one was, there was one that kind of, they came in and kind of said, well, the money's going to the Historical Society or another nonprofit, even though it was a kind of a for-profit, so it kind of skirted the issue. But I haven't seen anything written, maybe, maybe Kelly has or the, on, on the use, on use of that, but that's, I guess it's been like a case-by-case basis.
That is a very gray area. I can see that in cases, where it's going to be hard to tell somebody no because we've let so many people have it for free.
The chambers, of course, the first Friday, that's a standard that we, we partner with them.
So I thought, you know, maybe before we run into a situation that it is critical that we need a definition, maybe it's something we need to look and
Yeah.
And work on a definition now to get it in writing so there is a firm policy that defines what we're willing to extend to a partner or in partnering or co-sponsor, but also the qualifications for an agency or business or group that we can't...
I think that's a great idea, because if a church came in and said, we want to use your facility this Sunday, we want to use it for free, they're a not-for-profit, but...
But they would want to partner with us.
Right, right.
Or as to co-sponsor.
Yeah, so they get it for free, which seems like a terrible precedent in that case. I, I don't know what those rules should look like, but it does seem like we should have some, at least some guidelines.
Are you talking, Mayor, in, in reference to just this building or are you talking about other facilities as well?
Anytime.
Any facility, any city facility, not just Memorial?
Or, or Action.
Okay, so like at the park or something?
The back-to-school run. What did that really mean that we were partnering with them?
Well, I think staff's assisting with that.
So see that without that definition, it's how far are we going to be obligated and then where does it open our liabilities?
Right.
I'm not saying we should restrict our involvement, I'm saying we need to define, define so we can limit our liability. So, that's all that I had. Public concerns tonight? Do we have any? Okay, with, with that then, I'll entertain a, a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion that we adjourn?
Second?
A motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carry.